To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the soul of the free and universal nation.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please, to approve tonight's agenda? Who's fighting for that? Second?
Second.
Second fight, Jay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. First item is the student board representatives, Jocelyn Decker and Anaya Green.
Hello, my name is Anaya Green. I'm junior representative. I'm in the 11th grade and thank you for the opportunity to serve on the board. Winter sports are in full swing. The 2024 Nike Indoor Trap Nationals will take place in March at the Armory in New York City. Portervis High School will be represented by McKenna Williams and the 55 meter dash, Ashore Allen and the 400 meters, and Konstantina Prosha and the 55 meter dash and long jump. Additionally, Tina ran for the new Portervis High School record of 6.64 in the 55 meter dash, breaking the old school record of 6.71 held by Hector Longso in 2010 and 2011. Our Honor of Breakfast was held on December 20th, celebrating 356 students. Twelve T-shirts and twelve Breathless Beauty certificates were presented to students for positive referrals for the first quarter. The music department had a wonderful Christmas concert, winter concert, on December 5th, and the Drama Club presented a reading of a Christmas carol on December 15th. Dexter Robotics Competition this Saturday, January 13th in Fallsburg, and Sunday, February 12th in Queens, New York.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jocelyn Decker and I'm the senior representative. Before I begin, I would like to thank the board for the opportunity to serve. On Wednesday, January 17th, at the high school, the board's photographers will be taking all the club photos for the yearbook. The music department will be busy with the following. On Friday, January 19th, the All County Band and Chorus Festival will be at Monroe Woodbury High School. On Friday, February 2nd, and Saturday, February 3rd, the music students will also be participating in the Mary Wood University Senior Band Celebration. As well as on February 3rd, the Junior High All County Festival will be held in Warwick, and on February 9th and 10th, the All County Jazz Festival will be in Ocean. January regents will be given the week of February 23rd, January 23rd, sorry, January 24th and January 25th. Classes will be in session on Monday, the 22nd, and Friday, the 26th. There will be transportation to and from CTE during the regents days. Our annual winter ecology trip to Lake Placid and the SUNY EFS Newcom Center will be on February 23rd to February 27th. We have approximately 30 high school students participating. On February 6th, the Portervis High School will hold a vocal cabaret. On February 8th, it will be a sophomore information night at 6:00 PM in the auditorium. And following that, on February 12th, will be the superintendent conference day. Luckily, there'll be no school for students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great report. Uh, let's see. Bill, is Trish coming?
She has to text me. She said they get finished early. They're going to try to run down.
Okay, thank you very much.
She's going to text me if they finish early.
All right, thank you. Next, our elementary building principals' presentation.
All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you for this opportunity to present tonight. With me tonight, my two assistant principals, Mrs. Roosevelt and Mr. Gennaro, and I have Mrs. Lesnick and Mr. Carroll from HBE. And we also have Kim Ickel, who is our elementary literacy coach. So again, thank you for giving us this opportunity to present tonight. Just a couple of things we're going to present tonight, so, you know, it doesn't get too long. You guys heard all the wonderful things that we've been doing in the past, and we really want to try to streamline a little bit and also follow up on some of the things that we've presented on in the past. It kind of gave you a little bit of like how that looks and what that looks like as we put it into play this year. So tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about our Wilson Foundations Program. Again, that is our phonics reading program that we've really kind of, you know, implemented this year. Teachers are doing a great job. You're going to hear a lot of the great things that the kids are doing. We're going to talk about some of our character ed and PBIS, things that we have going on with Bus of the Month and Attendance Matters. And again, this is happening in both buildings, so you'll hear a little taste of what it looks like in both buildings. And then our project Lead the Way, which again is really kind of brand new. Teachers are still getting trained. I believe HBE, they're going to talk about that a little bit tonight, and you're going to see how that's kind of kicked off and how that's going to be implemented throughout the year and the years to come. So that's really our presentation tonight. We wanted to streamline again, like some of the things that we are working on and some of our focus this year. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gennaro and Mrs. Ickel.
Hello, everyone. Um, I'll be presenting on the Foundations K through 3. We'll be starting with those predictable procedures. So a lot of the program basically has to do with like developing a good phonics understanding and a good foundation for the kids. The best thing about this program is that it's very predictable. It always starts the same way. It starts with the letter sounds. It starts with, let's see. It starts with depending on the grade level of what they're actually focusing on. It slowly transitions throughout the activities. It's also, the materials are very easily manipulated by the kids. They have the diary boards, the magnet boards, as well as the student notebooks. Um, so. Sorry. All right. So it also strengthens our foundational skills, which is also great. If you look at the top corner, I think it's still not. It looks like, are you a student now? All right, you little boy. There it goes. Sorry about that. Well, they're working on tapping out sounds and using phonics terminology such as blue sounds, break, prefix and suffix, which is also helped transitions into reading and writing. It's also a scaffolding program. So basically, as they go on, they get a deeper understanding of phonics. So the boy up in the top corner, Joseph, as you can see, like he's tapping out like each individual sound. And then the little girl in the middle, she's actually working on blends and working on blue sounds. So it actually is building, and as a kindergarten, that's to transition into a first grade student. That won't hurt them. Um, and then, also, we have the Funhub, which is a tool that the kids can manipulate on the computer, and they can actually interact with it as well. So it focuses on different modalities. So, and the last is our professional development. We actually have a professional developer coming to our school this year, which has been a great resource for the teachers. She's been coming and modeling lessons in the beginning, and now she's moving towards like team teaching, which is really a great resource because they can bounce back and forth. And it's like on the double learning. Like they go right back and forth and they talk about the conversation. So pause them for a minute and we'll try different strategies and things like that. And also, she provides very key factor to teachers at the end of the, at the end of the day, as well as they have whole group instruction during their prep times. And also, this is something that's transitioning at ASK as well as HBE. And the actual professional developer will be going to HBE soon to also support those teachers within their lessons. So now I'm going to turn it over to our literacy coach, Kim Ickel, who will be sharing what she's been doing and how she's working towards becoming a certified Level 2 facilitator. Thank you.
Good evening. Just want to thank the board for this opportunity. So this year, I am working towards becoming a Level 2 facilitator certified through Wilson. As a facilitator, I've had the opportunity to kind of learn the systems and structures of foundations, but also really familiarize myself with what structure literacy is and what that means for our students in our classrooms and how to better support them. I do a lot of collaboration with colleagues in my field work. I'm currently teaching alongside two second grade teachers in their classrooms twice a week. We work together to plan, implement, and then analyze the data for students to kind of figure out what areas need to be targeted within their phonics instruction. So since we started implementing Wilson back in the fall as a tier one foundational skills class, we've seen tremendous growth in our students, not just in their decoding, but also in their end coding and their overall confidence when it comes to reading. By the end of the year, when I'll be certified as a Wilson Level 2 facilitator, I'll be able to turn to training, offer enhanced staff development, train others in the programs and philosophies if they have not been trained, and overall to help support our school-wide effort in literacy from. And now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Ruppin.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. The two initiatives that I'm going to highlight, out of the money that we have in place, I really wanted to share these with you because they're the ones that have really been revamped this year, just to be more intentional and proactive. So I'm going to share with you our Bus of the Month initiative that's happening at ASK. The way it kicked off was in September. I met with these bus driver and explained the program. Gave them resources, a poster to hang up on their bus, and plenty of bus awards. So they were very excited about it. Got started right away, and the next day after we talked about it, we saw kids bringing awards. And it was great that they jumped right in. Any student that's following the Pride 5 on the bus can receive an award from their bus driver. They bring the award to school and they place it in one of their nailboxes. You can see the kids doing that. And it's great because on the way in, our staff on the platform and inside the door see them. You can celebrate them, and it's a really great way to start their day. At the end of the month, I just count and store all the awards, and the bus with the most awards is the bus of the month. And we announce them over the loudspeaker. Each student comes into the office to receive a prize, and their bus is added to our Bus of the Month bulletin board. And the bus driver is also given an award that they can display on the bus. Just to remind the kids that, you know, keep up their good behavior and they could become the bus of the month again. And since starting the program, we've seen a decrease in referrals, with five late arrivals, absences or early releases combined. So I'm so proud to say that we were able to recognize over half of our students in one way or the other. So that's a great way to start the year off. Students who earn these awards receive an ASK attendance bag tag, ice cream tickets to redeem during their lunch. And students with perfect attendance were announced over the loudspeaker. And all students receiving an attendance award are highlighted on our bulletin board over here. The data cards are students with perfect attendance, and our students with excellent attendance are listed on the bottom there. So they all get to be recognized. And I just wanted to give a shout out to my secretary, Natalie Perry, for helping me pull this off because it was a lot to do in a short amount of time, and she just jumped right in. So I really appreciate her for that. So I just wanted to turn this over to Mr. Carroll from HBE, who also shares some initiatives.
Good evening, everybody. Some of this is going to be a little bit of what you just heard, but from the HBE side, we're obviously doing a lot of things in partnership with the two elementary schools. So some of this information is going to be a little bit redundant, but I'll try to speed through those parts. Bus of the Month is something that we are working on as well. That initiative came actually from the work that our PBIS team got to do over the summer. We were looking at hotspots in terms of referral data, and one of our hotspots that we identified was the buses. So we started talking as a team about how do we bring our Pride 5 to the buses and make sure that kids understand that that applies both in the school and during the time that they're away from here. So what we came up with with this initiative, you can see up on the board there that we developed a special letter now called Bus Bucks that was actually named by our bus drivers. I didn't have a name for them when I gave them to them, but he's a little smiley K. That's for bus K. The bus drivers are allowed to award for students on the way home, one bus buck and one on the way in the following morning. We have a mailbox that you can see that's painted like a bus up there under my bus coming into school bulletin board. The kids come in and they drop those in there, and at the end of the month, we count up whichever bus has the most bus bucks, and that bus wins. We've done snack parties, we've done extra recess, but we find a way to recognize and reward that bus. We also give a little bit of an incentive to the bus drivers. I got my favorite quote of the year from a bus driver fairly recently. He said, quote, "I didn't think this was going to work, but when I don't give them a bus buck, they ask me why so we can have a conversation." So that's indicative of the fact that the kids are into it. It's working. And you can see that we also were able to get some magnets with some of our PBIS money that go on the side of our buses and announce that as our Bus of the Month for everyone to see. And then, obviously, attendance is greatly important. We are following some of the same protocols that ASK is using. We are doing the monthly rewards. You can see some photos of some of our attendance kids up there. We also wanted to streamline our strategies for students who are struggling with attendance with the idea that communication with families is critical and trying to help families solve problems and overcome barriers is the focus of our contacts. So we start with the standard teacher phone calls or messages, and then at our team core meetings, we talk about students who are still noticing high numbers of absences. And then we have a process for following different contacts to try to reach out to those families and figure out what the barrier is and how our school can help overcome that. I can proudly say that HBE's attendance has been improved from last year's numbers every single month to this point. We are proud of that, and we are looking to continue it. Coming up in February, our PBIS team is going to partner with the attendance side and offer an incentive to the class that has the highest percentage of attendance for the month of February. There's going to be an incentive attached to that. We're going to really amp that up and announce that and make sure the kids are aware of that opportunity. So that's what I have, and I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Lesnick to talk about Project Lead the Way.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'm going to talk about Project Lead the Way. Project Lead the Way is our new science curriculum. What's unique about Project Lead the Way is it has the ability to be a K to 12 curriculum. So at the elementary schools, we're doing the kindergarten through five, uh, the three program is called Launch. Then you can move into a 6-8 program, which is called Gateway. And then when they get into high school, they can really specialize into computer science, engineering, or biomedical science. There are also programs that they offer. So here at the very beginning stages of rolling this out, our teachers are just about all trained, and they're jumping in and trying out the modules. They chose between the two buildings. The teachers got together and they chose three modules per grade level that they will do throughout the course of the year. The modules are very in-depth. They feature hands-on activities, projects, problems that build on each other, but they also relate to the real world. And I'm going to explain one of the specific modules next because it starts out broad with students exploring, the students explore videos and articles, and they read books. They look at websites and different vocabulary. It really turns the teacher to the guide as the students lead the problem solving through this exploration and cooperative learning and discussion. The elements of it are interactive, but they're also differentiated. So if a student is wondering about a vocabulary word, they can click on the word. It reads them the word. It has a picture. So it has a lot of different levels where it can support the students. The students have logbooks, and they take notes, and they record their research. There's graphic organizers. And after all of this studying, it ends with a culminated project. And I don't want to forget to mention Mr. Rorana because he has been, this has been his project along with us, if you know, kind of intended. He's been helping us with the ordering. He's been helping with the delivery. He's been kind of serving as a medium between the teachers and the professional development, checking in and seeing if they need any support. I'm going to talk about one of the specific modules so you can really understand how they are rolled out with the students. So up here's a third and fourth grade mixed age classroom, and they're studying life cycles and survival. So the first, in the beginning of the module, the students are introduced to the life cycle. They compare and contrast different animal life cycles to identify the common features and specific differences. I was in a classroom the other day. I honestly had no idea that oysters have a life cycle. I learned that from the students. They have a full life cycle from an egg, a larva, something called a spit, and then an adult oyster. So I just thought they were oysters. The students deepen their understanding of the life cycle as they investigate the life cycle moving along of a honeybee. So that becomes more of the specific focus. They learn that the worker bees have an important relationship with a flowering plant, and they connect their life cycles. Then they investigate whether living as a group makes the honeybees more or less susceptible to hazards. And then the final culminating project after all of this discovery is they design a bee habitat that promotes the survival of bees, and then they create a public service campaign to share their design and raise awareness of the importance of bees. So it starts out with just what would be the life cycle, and then it goes into these real-world problems and actual application. So the students are excited. They're excited to share what they're doing. They're excited to show their logbooks and what they're writing down, and excited to talk about it. So we're really excited to see where Project Lead the Way goes. We're at the very beginning stages, but the teachers are excited, the kids are excited. So we'll be keeping you informed as we move along with that. And then as the program also expands through 6th and 8th and then 9th through 12th grade. And finally, I get to speak on my favorite topic, which you've heard me speak now. This will be our third year of doing Reading Together Together. Together, again, with HBE and ASK. We've done the book Ways to Make Sunshine. Last year, we did The Kid Who Only Hit Homers, and we'll be letting you know what the book choice is this year. And each year, we really work together between the two schools, too. We read at the same time. We have theme days together. And we end with some type of project between the two schools. We've collected for the Humane Society. We've supported the Little League. We've worn sports clothing on the same days. We wore the same color on the same days. And it's so neat to have HBE students that go back and forth between HBE and ASK because they'll stop into my office, and I have the books on my shelf, and they're new to HBE, and say, hey, I have that book. And they're so proud to present that it's there, that they personally have that book, and that we have something in common, right away. So I'm so excited. The books are being narrowed down by the libraries and our technology specialists, and then they will present them to our committee. Our committee's already over 20 teachers. Our teachers will vote on what the book will be for this year, and then we'll get into our planning and what we're going to do with it. So I'm so excited to share that with you as soon as the book is chosen. That is our presentation. I want to thank the board for your support of all of these initiatives. Thank you for supporting Wilson. It's been wonderful for Project Lead the Way and supporting the Reading Together program. I think we've got a lot of really great things happening. I'm excited to keep you posted. Listen with any questions.
Thank you so much. Thank you, guys.
We're worried about oysters. What else?
Next this evening are administrative reports. Our first one, superintendent of schools, Dr. John Bell.
Good evening, everyone. First thing, I just wanted to, on behalf of the board and all the employees, extend an ode to the Richardson family. We lost a third grader at ASK in the Richardson, and we just want to extend our condolences to everyone there. Second thing, I won't talk about Phase 1. I'll save that for JT, but I just wanted to bring you up to date on Phase 2. Just a reminder, Phase 2 is the renovation of this to new Portervis Middle School and all the field tile, the entire 21 on campus. We're having a kickoff meeting with the construction contractors next week, and work will actually start on the second shift, meaning after school. Could be as early as March or either late March or early. We'll start that work. Anyone that we could do after hour, you will. Phase 3, just a reminder, that's the two-tiered fields, Chase Field and Lynette Field. Renovations to the high school auditorium and the high school library. They're still, those plans are still up at State End waiting for approval, but we expect to put them out to bid next month. And again, they'll also be spring and summer. They'll be all done by August, by the end of August. So Phase 1, 2, and 3 will all be done in time for the opening of school in September. I think I might have mentioned this one month before, but I just wanted to update you. We're still working with Con Ed on the idea of a solar farm up on the former Vicaretti property, which is a property we own across the street from the Trey State Parish camp. And we're working on a plan there to put solar, so that the solar field would be large enough that we would not have an electric bill for any of our facilities. It would all be covered through the solar farm. So we're working on that. I'll keep you posted on that. Mike Olbrich's favorite topic is Power School. We didn't pull up, we didn't pull up the transition from School Tool as a student information system to Power School this year. Before Mike and his guys were pulling their hair out, doing all the dirty work, we could get all that information exported from School Tool and into Power School because even though it's only January, high school students picking courses for next year is right around the corner. So we got to begin the process of uploading information into Power School. So we're ready to hit the ground running this summer with Power School as our SIS. The next day is snowy yesterday. Everybody was upset with me at lunchtime yesterday. Everyone going home early. And it was not pretty out on the roads at lunchtime. But by the end of the day, I had warmed up and it started to rain, and that's exactly why you didn't send the kids home in the middle of the day because the forecast, excuse me, the forecast said in the middle of the day it was going to be the worst time to be on the roads. And we actually had a student and a parent, a student and a parent of a student, who have early release, and they complained about how bad the roads were in the middle of the day when they got to go home. And I said, thank you very much. You just proved my point why we didn't get out early. Maybe we shouldn't let early release kids go early on snowy days. They didn't want to hear that. They didn't want to hear that, so I just got that story, so. And then this morning, if you're wondering, um, we were in pretty good shape. We were very fortunate both in the city and in town in terms of how the roads held up with flooding last night. Uh, but the county actually asked all the schools, uh, we got a late email, probably around eleven thirty last night from the county, asking all the schools in the county to take a two-hour delay so that they could have time for the sun to come out and check all the roads in all the towns and cities to make sure everything was okay. We were okay, we probably could have come in at normal time, but when the county asked, we said yes, sir. And, uh, so that's why we had to delay as a precautionary measure, um, the swing. Uh, that's everything I have.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bell. Uh, next, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Dr. Natasha Walkal.
Good evening. I just want to thank our elementary school administration for a great presentation tonight. There's a lot of great initiatives. Um, I know it seems overwhelming at times, but, um, our teachers, our administrators are rock stars when it comes to trying something new. So I just want to thank you for all of the hard work that goes into bringing these programs to life. Um, just a quick note, our education committee was rescheduled from today, um, to next week, Thursday at five P.M. due to weather, and we had a, obviously, reschedule report being until now. We are also finalizing the agenda, agenda this week for our February conference day. Um, teachers can expect to, um, work on curriculum, we have some, um, cool activities set up. And for teachers in the afternoon, um, there's a choose your own adventure, but it has to do with curriculum development as well. And, um, our other staff, um, have other options, we have workshops scheduled for them, um, including our facilities, which usually that's a catch-up big for them, but their leadership is all around. Uh, finally, our school community, our community school climate surveys were completed last Friday. Um, we have a really great response rate, so I just want to thank, um, our principals, teachers, students, and community, community members for, um, responding to that. Uh, we'll take some of that data and, um, analyze it in-house, uh, we're having it worked on right now, and then, um, we'll use that information for further program development like we have been. So thank you so much, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much, in pleasure. And next, Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. John Timm.
Dr. Bell, I'm a little disappointed. You knew at eleven thirty last night, you didn't text me.
I didn't say I was awake, it's all right.
Oh, okay. You read the email this morning. So Phase One, uh, as reporting, is coming along very well. The she-bug up with backer painting in certain areas, um, you know, Area A and B have come along significantly, uh, and we've got some work, conceived quite a bit of work. I call it the eighty-twenty rule, and that is eighty percent of the work appears to be done at the last twenty percent of the time, so it's, uh, it's all going to wrap up, and we will be in school, uh, come September. So in terms of safety, armor one is something I've talked about, uh, in the past. It's that protective film that we put on the, on the windows. Uh, it's reported to me that, uh, it's almost completely rid of ASK, ninety-five percent is, uh, as I've been told. There's a few more items to be done, and then they're going to move to the 201 complex. Armor one will be in, and then down to HBE. Governor Vogel reported yesterday, or State of the State, so state run, aid run will be coming out soon, which will prepare me to take those numbers and put together our first budget meeting, uh, at, at the next board meeting, I'll put together my first budget presentation, which is our new budget, so. That's it for me, thank you.
Okay. Yes, John?
Two quick things I wanted to add, sorry. Uh, he had mentioned the, uh, State of the State address for the governor yesterday, and she highlighted two things that we've been looking at very seriously. I think she's got it bugged or something, but she talked about two different initiatives, uh, special money for cooling, which we've talked about in our project coming up in the spring, we'd like to do air conditioning in the three schools other than the new ASK, which already has air conditioning up in. Uh, but she also talked about sixty million dollars towards, uh, in high needs, uh, low-income communities for swimming pools, which is something we've been talking about a lot. So we're going to have to work our magic to see if we can get our hands on any of that money. And, um, Sage and Justin had talked about attendance, and we made a real push on attendance matters this year. And we've also have more than three hundred new students riding buses. Not new students to the district, but used to be walkers, and now they're riding the bus. And I just wanted to tell you about our attendance for the first four months. So I'll, I'll highlight each building, and I'll talk about September, October, November, December. So this is the high school. Attendance went up in the four months, they went up two percent, four percent, two percent, two percent. So these are increases, for example, like from eighty-five to eighty-seven, ninety to ninety-two, whatever. Middle school, for the four months, up three percent, up three percent, up three percent, up seven percent compared to December last year to this year. ASK up one percent, flat, up one percent, up seven percent in December. So as it gets colder, the percentages of kids coming to school is dramatically higher, so we think that has a lot to do, not only with Justin and Sage's bulletin boards, but with bus riding. You know, kids getting the bus and not opting to stay home when it's cold out. And then, uh, HBE was up two percent, two percent, three percent, eight percent. So those dramatic, our December, uh, increases were dramatic. I've never seen numbers go up so much month to month from year to year, so I just wanted to share that great job in the building to everybody that attendance matters.
Okay, thank you. So now we have the privilege of a presentation of Matilda Junior, Ms. Alpang.
She has her own theme song.
Should we stand over, should we stand over here, maybe you guys will?
That's fine, that would be great, thank you.
Big kids, you know your role, good, separate family, perfect. We just finished our final rehearsal.
Oh, wow.
Okay, next, good, yeah, good. Naomi, come in front, start the next one, next one. Watch your wire, kids. Just putting it out there, uh, Mrs. Stone and Miss Yedley Stage, you remember the beginning? Sixty years ago, you were part of the magic, best work. And then, good, and then the next row come up, some featured kids come a little bit more, good. Okay, so we're just going to sing the finale for you because you, you know, we already had the beat going, and we're ready to go home, get to sleep. You can smile, you don't have to be scared. All right, here's our little finale for Matilda Junior, and then our teacher's going to be a spy one to hang out with us, there we go. Ready?
When I grow up, when I grow up, I will be tall enough to reach the branches that I need to reach to find the trees you get to climb when you're grown up. And when I grow up, when I grow up, I will be sweet every day on the way to work, and I will go to bed late every night, and I will be gone when the sun comes up, and I will watch the clock turn till my eyes go sweat, and I won't care because I'll be all grown up when I grow up. When I grow up, you will be one of your friends, and that little thing I, little story I, get on the ground, and get on top of you, can't think a thing. So if you look and find that life's not fair, and love can even leave you, just have to grin and bear it, if you always think you're on the chin and worry, might as well be saying you think that it's okay, then that's not right. And if it's not right, you have to go there and try. Nobody else is going to write for me, nobody will be going to change my story, sometimes you have to be a little bit naughty.
Just a reminder that everybody, the show is Friday at seven, and then Saturday at two in September.
Break alike, folks. Yeah, have a great time, kid. Okay, next on our, uh, agenda is the consent agenda item. Item A, the minutes from December twelfth, twenty-three board meeting minutes. Item B, the minutes CPSE meeting minutes for December eighth through January second, twenty twenty-four. Item C, minutes, CSE meeting minutes for December fourth, twenty twenty-three through December twenty-first, twenty-three. Item D, our textbook disposal request for ASK Elementary School. Item E is a hardware disposal request, Fort Worth Central School District IT Department. Item F is the twenty-three, twenty-four board meeting, uh, schedule revision. Item G is the twenty-three, twenty-four annual appointments revision. Item H, Great American Rivalry Series in the amount of one thousand dollars to the athletic department. Item I is the treasurer's financial report for December twenty twenty-three. And item J is the resignation of Board of Education member Annie Foster. May I have a motion on those items? Michael, thank you. May I have a second? Nanda? Any questions coming? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Just real quick before we go forward, I just wanted to thank Annie for her service at the board. She worked for the district for many, many years, over thirty years, and then was a great board member too, so we're sorry to see her go, but we wish her well.
Next, our personnel employment agenda items. Item A, retirement support staff position four-two-seven, senior food service helper. Item B, retirement support staff position four-four-two, senior payroll clerk. Item C, resignation support staff position five-nine-five, grounds worker. Item D is resignation support staff position six-one-four, cleaner. Item E is an appointment support staff substitute food service helper. Item F, appointment substitute teachers and nurses for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Item G is the appointment contract, it's a revision for the superintendent of schools. Item H is amendment to the board docs, personnel agenda item for December twelfth, twenty twenty-three. May I have a motion? Moved by Michael Witt. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Kara? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Before we start our action items, the first four action items are, uh, scholarships to the district, two by the Sadikiyani family, and two, uh, from Pete Nan Stellato, uh, who Pete was a graduate of Fort Worth High School. I just can't thank these people enough for these scholarships, and I know we've talked about this before, but the generosity of this community towards our students is just unbelievable, and we can't thank all these people enough for that. So the first item, action item, A, scholarship, Sadikiyani Court Pride Scholarship. May I have a motion on that?
I'll move it.
Moved by Phil.
Second.
Second by Flo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B is the scholarship, Dr. Hassan Sadikiyani Memorial Scholarship. Moved by Flo.
I'll second.
Second by Kara. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C is the scholarship, the Pete Nan Stellato Memorial Scholarship. May I have a motion on that?
Move it.
Moved by Jay.
Second.
Second by Flo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B is the scholarship, Michael and Patricia Salitro Memorial Scholarship. May I have a motion? Michael, thank you.
Second.
Second by Flo. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Just once again, want to thank all these families for the additional scholarships to our students. It's really a wonderful thing. Item E is our lead evaluator, teachers for twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Brian Lynn, motion? May I have a motion on that?
I'll move it.
Okay, moved by Bill Harris. Second by Flo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. F is the appointment of a substitute clerk for the Board of Education meetings. May I have a motion on that? Uh, Flo, thank you. Second, Michael, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G is the capital project allowances and change orders. May I have a motion on that? Moved by Jason.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item A is the CSEA collective bargaining agreement for, uh, twenty-one through twenty-five, twenty twenty-one through twenty-five. Moved by Michael. Second by Phil Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I just wanted to make a point on why in the world is this on the agenda tonight? Right, Winnie's laughing. Contract expired in twenty-one, they negotiated a new contract which finished up in twenty-two, but the language never got done. It wasn't in terms of conditions, we've been operating by them since then, uh, but there was still language stuff. One of the attorneys in our office, in our firm, left, which made things drag out even more. I'm happy to say, we were able to get everybody in the room last month, I think it was, and iron out all the little language details to make sure we were all on the same page, and that's why a contract that's two and a half years into a new contract, it's not even due anymore. That's why it's on tonight, it's going to be finally finished, little language stuff that was just hanging over our heads. Winnie, I'm sorry I took so long, but I'm sure glad it's on here tonight, okay?
All right, thank you very much. Uh, next is, uh, item I, the PJTA collective bargaining agreement for twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight. May I have a motion on that? Moved by Michael.
Second.
Second by Bill Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item J is the poli, is policy, second and final reading for policy numbers three, four, two, zero, five, one, four, zero, five, six, seven, three, five, six, seven, seven, five, six, nine, one, and six, one, two, one. May I have a motion to bring that in for it?
Move it.
Moved by Jason, second?
Second.
No, I don't have that on my agenda. Okay, policy seven, four, two, zero, and seven, four, seven, zero. Still moving. You're still moving. Thanks. Still have the second. Any questions or comments on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sure.
My mic might have been coming on fast enough, but I wanted to butt in about item I, the PJTA contract. Uh, the teacher's contract, uh, this is the final year, it expires on June thirtieth, and this is a new four-year contract for the next four years, and, uh, we were able to do it in one night of negotiations. It was really a very productive and positive experience, so I thank the teachers on the committee, and I thank the, uh, the teachers, the membership, uh, for overwhelmingly approving the new four-year deal, so. It was a good, good contract for everybody around there, they're going to get raises, they're going to pay more in healthcare, there's lots of incentives for people to stay here and stay involved in activities, coaching and longevity, and it's a really, it's a great thing for Fort Worth, so I just want to thank the teachers and their leadership.
Thank you, Karen. All right, next are board member items, the committees, uh, buildings and grounds. We haven't had a meeting recently with the process. Yes. Yes, do you want to give a little update?
On Monday and today, uh, we drafted the board, uh, B and G committee number, so Michael and Bill, uh, have been at our offices about quarter to ten this morning, uh, with, uh, doing interviews of new architects for Phase Four and Five and Six and Phase Seven and everything. Uh, so we interviewed the, uh, we reached out to nine firms, one couldn't handle another district, we had eight firms put together, very comprehensive proposals, we reviewed those, we trimmed it from eight firms to four, and we interviewed four firms today, and on, you know, there was one of them on Monday as well, and, uh, just amazing ideas, great stuff, so the B and G committee was very involved in that with the interviews, and then, uh, by tomorrow, we hope to pick a new architectural firm for Phase Four and beyond. But thank you to you guys for giving up your day today to do that.
No problem. It was a pleasure. It's a very interesting process, I think Mike and I enjoyed it very much, you know?
Learned a lot.
And it's, you learn a lot, and it's also very interesting to see the approach of all the different architectural firms and what their vision is for the school, so it was very, very great time, so. All right, DLT?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. Deer Park, Flo?
No, Deer Park's good.
Okay. Thank you.
But, you know, I, I, and if Deer Park, Ford, watch the roadways, um, I know 2019 is not very good, you think it's a puddle? You think it's a puddle, and it's not. I have made phone calls to the state because we have a, we have one that's about this big, right on 209, and you think it's a, you think it's a water, and it's not. It's about this thick. So I'm trying, if you see anything, call your municipality, tell them, tell them to get somebody out there to fix it, because it's not good out there, especially now at night. But watch the roads, please.
Thank you as well. Education Committee?
We were supposed to meet tonight, so we'll meet next on the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Health and Wellness?
Need to schedule. We'll schedule some.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. Nispa, Mike?
Lobby days coming up in February. There's a virtual and an in-person, and that started for a while.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Orange County School Boards?
They're actually meeting right now, so I'll have to report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Policy?
We haven't met since our last meeting. We just had a couple of final meetings tonight. Our next meeting is January 17.
Okay. And Safety?
Safety is helping.
Okay. Thank you, John. All right. Next, our board member comments. Michael?
Just great to hear the projects coming, the elementary schools. It's really, it's great to see them starting really young again, get them involved, having all the teachers and resources available. Excited to see, hopefully, the floor this weekend, and a lot of great things happening in the district. So keep your eyes peeled, things are moving quick.
Yes. Phil?
Nothing to report, just something forward to the next 17 projects with Dr. Bell and Kat here, and see what's going on.
I won't be calling Albany tomorrow. You know that. Tell them about your pothole in your town, will you? No, it's not your pothole. Well, maybe a big pothole, huh? I won't be calling Albany. I know about a lot of stuff. I do appreciate, thank you for the presentation tonight, very informative, and good luck with everything for the rest of the year. Very good with the, with the attendance. Very, very good. Very nice.
Kara?
Just thank you to the elementary principals for your presentation, a lot of great things going on, and also to the ASK Performing Arts. I enjoyed that. And I just want to thank Andy Foster for her service and wish her the best.
Yes. Nan?
I would repeat everything Farid said.
Okay. Thank you. Jason?
I do not.
Okay. Very good. All right. So next will be dates to remember.
We have Friday, January 12, ASK Performing Arts presents Matilda at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium. Saturday, January 13, ASK Performing Arts presents Matilda also in the high school auditorium at 2:00 and 7:00 PM. Monday, January 15, is Dr. Martin Luther King Day, and district is closed. Wednesday, January 17, is the ASK PTA meeting from 6:30 to 8:00 in the ASK library. Friday, January 19, is the HBE PTA Family Fun Night. It's bingo, and it's from 5:00 to 7:00 at HBE. Tuesday, January 26, the middle school's second virtue talk fundraiser begins to benefit the eighth grade trip to Washington. Friday, February 2, Bears to Build is at ASK for Family Fun Night, 6:00 PM at the ASK cafeteria. Friday, February 9, is the elementary trimester two progress reports will be issued for ASK and HBE. Monday, February 12, is the superintendent's conference day. There are no, there's no school for students. And Tuesday, February 13, is the next Board of Ed meeting, and we'll be back in the high school cafe at 7:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you very much, Kara. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Michael. Second by Flo. At 7:55. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Drive safe, everybody.